This legislature is back from recess. Ladies and gentlemen, when we left yesterday afternoon, we were discussing Bill 286, which was moved into the third reading file. So what I have on the agenda left are several bills. And we still need to work on Bill 207-32, Bill 244-32, and Bill 289-32COR. So at this time, I'm going to ask Senator Tom Ada, are you ready with Bill 207-32?
Yes, Madam Speaker, but before we do that, I would like, then notwithstanding the standing rules, I would make a move to revert back to legislative concurrences for the purpose of placing three appointments into the voting file.
Senator Tom Ada, if we may, can we go ahead and just try and exhaust the calendar before we do the motions?
Okay.
If that's okay with you?
Okay.
Thank you, Senator Ada, I appreciate that. So we're still with you on Bill 207-32.
Okay. Madam Speaker, yesterday, I had actually asked that we pass on file because the chairman of that heard the particular bill was not present.
Okay.
Hoping that he would be here today. I've checked with his office this morning, they were not certain whether he would be present today. However, the bill is, I believe, time-sensitive, and so I would like to move on it despite the fact that the chairman's not here. Now, if the body desires that we go into the committee the whole, then I guess you would have to entertain that motion, and so that then we can start giving advance notice to Guam Power Authority to be present for the committee of the whole.
Senator Ada, if you wish to proceed, and until a motion is made to the committee of the whole, we'll go ahead and proceed on the regular motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, Madam Speaker, then I would move that Bill 207-32 as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land be placed in the third reading file, and I would like to introduce, I would like to discuss it.
Without any objection, please proceed. Senator Ada, I mean Senator Frank Ogun.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and to the good sponsor of Bill number 207. But, Madam Speaker, can I request, I know it was hinted at...
Hmm? Well, if there's a desire by the body to go in the committee of the whole, maybe if I can just give a brief background on the bill itself. The bill is an act to approve the terms and conditions of Guam Power Authority's revenue bonds to finance capital improvements to the island-wide power system. This is the bill that seeks approval to allow the Guam Power Authority to go out and borrow $95 million in order to be able to undertake capital improvement projects on their generation system, their transmission, and other power-related, system-related projects. And so, that's what this bill is about, and there may be questions in here that the body may have, which really, the Guam Power Authority would be best, better suited to respond to the technical questions that may come up, although I think I would be able to respond to them. So, I would also like to point out that, of course, the bill that was introduced and the bill that was reported out of committee, there's quite a gap between those two bills. And so I do have a substitute, to the substitute bill, that I would proffer, which really outlines all the changes that I would like to have restored back to the bill, and we can discuss those point by point. So, if the body wants to go into a committee the whole, we can do that. I was actually planning, and I do have a copy of the substitute, or a Bill 207-32 as substituted and as further substituted by the author, which shows all the changes that I would like to make on the version that was reported out by committee.
Yes, Senator, what we'll go ahead and do is, because our colleagues don't have a copy, I'll go ahead and take a minute recess so that we can distribute the copies to all our colleagues, and then you can work on that.
Okay. But what I moved on was to accept, was to move Bill 207-32 as substituted by the committee.
Right.
And that's what we'll be talking on.
And that was accepted.
But, so, maybe, if you can just guide me along, maybe what I really would prefer to do is, as that we place in third reading, a version that further substitutes the bill that was reported out of committee, which will be a Bill number 207-32**, which I haven't reported out yet.
Senator Ada, I'm gonna just take a moment recess, just so that we can do the process right. This legislature's back from recess. Senator Tom Ada?
Thanks, Madam Speaker. I have passed out a substitute version of Bill number 207-32, which was reported out of committee. What was reported out of committee is a Bill number 207-32 as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land. And I would like to substitute that bill with another version, and on the top left it should show Bill number 207-32**, and at the bottom, it reads "as further substituted by the author."
And I'm gonna go ahead and ask you, Senator Ada, to say "as further substituted by, on session floor."
And "as further substituted on the session floor." Yes.
Without any objections, the motion carries. Senator Ada, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Madam Speaker, as I had stated earlier, the Guam Power Authority needs to undertake certain capital improvement projects in order to be able to come into compliance with the cleaner regulations that have been promulgated by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, and right now, they are actually raising against time to meet certain deadlines. And some of these projects, of course, that needs to be undertaken are listed in Page 3, Page, and Page 4 of the bill. Now, it is requesting authorization to go out and borrow $95 million, but out of that, they will only be able to net approximately, actually, $74 million to actually be able to fund the projects that need to be undertaken. And so, if we take a look at Page 3, it allocates $61 million for projects to be undertaken for generation improvement projects. Now, the major projects in that group, in that bucket of projects, is, if you take a look at Item G, Line 18, on Page 3, this energy storage equipment, that project alone is gonna cost approximately $40 million. Now, what this energy storage project does is, we all know that we frequently experience these brief power outages because of the fact that we either glitches occur in the system, and so we have to drop, the GPA basically has to drop some of the load, restart their generators, and then bring them back on. With the batteries, of course, they're looking at basically procuring a battery that's large enough to be able to take up the load that is normally carried by any one of the various generators that the Authority has. The Authority has estimated that there's probably about 250,000 hours of downtime throughout the system annually as a result of these under-frequency problems, and the installing these energy storage equipment will take care of most of that. It's not gonna completely eliminate that problem, because to do that, you know, to find that perfect solution is gonna be much more expensive than really the Authority deems would be prudent at this point. In addition to that, what the energy storage equipment would do is it really is starting to get in front of the installation of a lot of the renewable energy generation that is being put into the community. As we all know, of course, many of these renewables are photovoltaic generators, and, you know, these things are really considered, you know, on a rainy day, or if you have that short period of time that, you know, the sun doesn't shine, or whatever, then they could start dropping loads briefly, and so basically what the battery does is it provides that continuity and makes up for that shortcoming that normally is associated with renewables. In addition to that, the, you'll see there on Lines 20, 21, and 22, is it adds up three new projects. One is it includes in there funding for an LNG startup study. Now, when the committee reported this out, they actually zeroed out the $3 million that GPA was asking for to undertake this study. And the rationale for that was that the, was that GPA at the public hearing said, "No, we're not gonna use any of this money to fund any LNG-related study or improvements." And they set that on the premise that they were gonna be able to get the necessary funds to do the study from basically the reduction in the oil prices, the LIAC, from out of the PUC. But, as it turned out, all they were able to get out of that was approximately $1 million, and so they really still need an additional $3 million to be able to fund that study. They also, the committee had also deleted the amounts that were requested for major maintenance on Cabris III generator and the, a major boiler overhaul at Cabris I. And the reason for that is because the committee had interpreted that the PUC had previously funded for that already, which was true, but because the money was not available, what had happened was the independent power producers had actually fronted those funds so that they can undertake the projects as soon as possible. Now, GPA has to pay back that money that was fronted by your independent power producers. So, you know, that justifies basically the reason why those projects are putting, put back in. The committee did not have any problems about the request for $5.5 million, $586,000 to undertake capital improvement projects on the transmission system, nor did it have any problems about allocating $1.6 million for the distribution improvements. Now, a major change, if you take a look at Page 5, is that the committee, the committee wanted, added language in there that then said, "We wanna take $5 million, we wanna allocate $5 million of the bonds to pay off the GPA self-insurance fund, and if you do that, then it will eliminate a surcharge that we are paying for right now, which actually translates on the bill about $5 per month." Now, the, the problem with that, according to bond counsel, is that, first of all, we're taking tax-exempt money to pay for something that is really not a capital improvement, and as a result, you cannot use tax-exempt funds to do, to basically pay off, for example, the self-insurance fund. The self-insurance fund is basically a program that was authorized by the Public Utilities Commission to build up an account of up to $20 million, so that in the event of a typhoon, GPA has $20 million available to begin restoration. And so, they've been charging then the customers an amount of something like $2.90 on every billing to build up the funds. Currently, there's about, I believe, $15 million in the fund, and I think they anticipate that in about another couple of years, if we continue with the surcharge, the self-insurance account would be then, have been satisfied, and then the surcharge will no longer continue. The bond council's concerns with this, in addition to, you know, in addition to using tax-exempt money for a, for something that's not a capital improvement project, does cause some concerns, because then, it's just gonna cost, now, I mean, it can be funded, but it will have to be a taxable type of bond, and it'd be a lot cheaper. I know that the Consolidated Commission on Utilities right now has been discussing the possibility of the fact that, because that account has really pretty much been satisfied, there's sufficient funds in there, that if a typhoon, a big typhoon was to come by, there were sufficient funds in there to keep us, to keep GPA floating for a while to make the repairs, until it is able to get the additional funds that is needed, but that it could actually ease back on the self-insurance surcharge. And instead of trying, maintaining at the current level, so that they can satisfy that account in the next two years, to stretch it out and reduce it by about 75 percent, so that then you stretch out that pay-in time to about seven years. And that, I am aware, they are already discussing, and that they would then, of course, once they've, you know, agreed on the numbers, they're gonna be a 50 percent reduction, a 75 percent reduction, they will then have to petition the Public Utilities Commission to reduce that surcharge. The, I've also, on Page 5, on Line 8 there, the committee also wanted to take $5 million of the, of the bond proceeds to set aside for, for a reserve by the Guam Power Authority and a fund separate and apart from any other fund for the sole purpose of legislatively-authorized renewable energy funding programs for residential and commercial purposes. And with that there, that, I'm proposing that we delete that, because it creates a couple of problems. First of all, when GPA goes out to the bond market, and it has to sign some kind of certification that, I think they're required to begin expending these funds within the next three years. And it's difficult for them to certify that, yes, they can undertake, you know, I mean, we haven't even identified what these, what these, what this legislatively authorized renewable energy projects might be, and whether it can be done in three years. And so, it'd be difficult for them to make that certification, and so they're asking that that be eliminated. Now, if the body really feels that we wanna set aside that $5 million, it's gonna have to be a taxable sort of bond that will have to go with it, the, so I'm proposing that we eliminate that. And then, on Lines 17 through 20, I've added new language in there, which basically says, because the way the bill is written, it really allocates buckets of money. For example, it allocates $61 million for improvements to the generation system. And so what that language does on Page 5 is that it's basically saying that if, after they've done all these projects, and there's still a couple of million dollars left over, that then they can take that excess funds and use it in another group of projects. And so, but without that language, basically, it just says $61 million for generation improvement projects, and it doesn't say what happens with the, if there's any excess. And so, that's what that particular section does. The, the committee further wanted that this self-insurance fund surcharge, that a moratorium be put on it. And again, here, the bond council has a problem with that, because then now, the legislature is going against the very laws that it passed, which basically says that we will not impinge, infringe on the powers of the PUC. So the PUC already said that the GPA will assess a surcharge for the self-insurance account, and then we are saying, "Well, you stop that for the next two years," or however long it says here. I think it's for, yeah, for 24 consecutive months. So, I think the law is very clear that we cannot, you know, once the PUC has basically set certain rate levels, the legislature really can't be going in there and saying, "No, instead of four, we want it as three." We can't go, we can't from here go in there and say, "No, we don't agree that you should have a rate increase," and all that. So, you know, the way the laws have been written, the way the bond covenants have been written, it really pretty much keeps the PUC decisions pretty much independent, and for us to then basically, I guess, abrogate what the PUC has already established, may lead to further problems, and I think we want to avoid that. Finally, on Section 4 there, there's language on Lines 13 through 15, which basically says that this approval of financial agreements or arrangements, what happens is we, the money is put into various accounts, a debt reserve account, all kinds of securities, and as the money is in there, it also generates interest. Now, normally, what happens in the bond covenants is that this interest, when, if it becomes, when it's generated, which annually, they estimate to be about $100,000, reverts back to the construction fund. So then, you know, all that money goes back, which can be used to further the construction effort. But what was being proposed by the committee is that any income generated from any such financial agreements, arrangements, shall be directed towards decreasing residential rate payer rates. And that's, I mean, that's certainly something that we would want to support, but the problem that we would have with that is it's discriminatory. What about the other customer classes? The commercial customers say, "Hey, I'm in there with you when the rates are increased. Now, when the rates are gonna be decreased, I also want to be a part of that." So, you know, we're talking, so if, if, so there's, so if the other customers are gonna wanna come in, the other customer categories are gonna wanna come in and say, "Well, I want that benefit also," well, there's probably not gonna be hardly enough to even make a ripple on the radar screen. In addition to that, and probably from a more practical standpoint, is that the money that we're talking about that's gonna be generated from the interest that is generated and whatnot, is probably about $100,000 a year. Now, if we're gonna take that and apply it to the reduction of rates, even if we were able to get away with just that one customer class, what happens then is they have to go to the PUC, the PUC fires up its consultants to take a look at this, you know, by the time we get all these expenses done, there's probably nothing left. So, so the way then these have been handled is it goes back into the construction fund. And that actually are the changes that Bill 207-32* proposes to bring back and further close the gap between what the close the gap between what the committee had, between what, what the original bill was, what the committee reported out, and so now, we're just trying to close the gap. I think, you know, when the committee was doing its due diligence, it asked very important questions, like, why are you asking for $40 million to get, to buy energy storage batteries that will store up to 40 megawatts? Why not start off with 10, 10 megawatts? And then, maybe by next year, the price of these things would go down. And so, GPA made its analysis, and they said, you know what, a 10-megawatt battery storage, it's not going to do anything. You know, if that's all we're going to get, might as well forego it and do something else with it. But, and so, they did an analysis, and to find that sweet spot, and that sweet spot was a 40-megawatt generator, I mean, battery system, that would then actually achieve the desired effect insofar as reducing the number of lost production hours, which, when you lose production hours, then you can't sell that power. And it also can reduce the amount of spinning reserves, the fuel that is burned for spinning reserves, and they counted in that savings into this. So, Madam Speaker, I ask my colleagues to, you know, seriously consider the Bill Number 207-32*, as further substituted by the author and amended on the floor, and, and so that we can allow GPA to go out and own. One last point. The question, of course, that needs to be asked is, when you go out and borrow money, you're going to need to pay it back. Are we going to see a rate increase? And the answer to that is no. So, the reason for that is because by the year 2015, and they anticipate it's probably going to take that long before they are going to be able to get this thing out on the market, get it through the PUC and all that, is that you've got some debt that is now starting to expire. For example, every year, for the last 20, 20 years, I believe, GPA has been making a sizable payment to your independent power producers in, for the, for the power plants that they have built. Well, that is now coming to, to mature by 2015. So, that's, that's money that they no longer have to pay to the independent power producers, but can be now used to service this debt. There are other, I believe, there's also another bond that is going to be maturing, and so, you know, as these debts fall off the table, they're basically going to use that revenue to roll it over to service this debt. Insofar as this borrowing is concerned, it has been vetted at the Public Utilities Commission. They have gone over there to basically tell them, probably in more general terms, the projects that they need to undertake, and the Public Utilities Commission, of course, has had a chance to vet this. After this is finished, of course, they would still have to go back to the Public Utilities Commission to get that final approval from them before they go out to market. Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll try and answer it. Thank you.
On the motion, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. The question I have is really a broad overall question in, because of the nature of how we started with the bill, then we went to a substitute bill, now we went, now we're at a star-star bill. And so, the question is really, with the changes, and the additions, and the removals, is GPA in support of the current measure that's in front of us?
Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, this, this has been a collaborative effort between my office as the sponsor for the bill, and with the Guam Power Authority, the Consolidated Commission on Utilities, and even to a large extent, the discussions of the very things that I was bringing up have actually been had with the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations. So, so this is not, this wasn't done in a vacuum. There's been a collaborative dialogue going on to ensure that everybody was on board. GPA's Chief Financial Officer, the Chairman of the CCU, the Bond Council, Stan Dirks, Gida, who by law is responsible for, you know, once the authorization is given, to go out to the bond market to obtain the bonds, they have been in the loop. Well, and like I said, I know that the Public Utilities Commission was involved in this discussion early on, months ago, insofar as the, you know, the, the rate increases and the projects that will be taken. But I think the most important point in my mind was, okay, we're going to go out and borrow $93 million, are we going to be seeing, you know, a 10% rate increase? And the answer to that is no. And that was the assurance that I got from, from GPA and the CCU.
On the main motion, Senator Frank Huggins.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and good morning to you and our colleagues. You know, Madam Speaker, when I was looking at the original legislation, it authorized borrowing $74 million. And then, looking at this, it would increase that authorization amount to borrow, or $62 million, I'm sorry, and then it increased to $95, of which $74 million of those proceeds will be utilized for the projects that the good sponsor of the legislation have highlighted. My initial question was something that he responded to. What would be the cost to the ratepayers as a result of going out to the bond market and borrowing $95 million? And the response was, it will not result in a rate adjustment because it would be offset by expiring debt obligations. You know, with all due respect to the sponsor of the legislation and the chairman, I think that that's also a statement that really needs to be reaffirmed to the ratepayers and to the people of Guam by the individuals who will be tasked with going out and borrowing these resources and ensuring that the ratepayers will not have to absorb an additional obligation. So, that's one of the concerns I have, and I certainly hope that if we do not have that opportunity to have these representatives from GPA appear before the legislative body, and I will respect the chairman for the nature of this discussion, that that's a statement that I will take away from this particular measure. That as a result of GPA going out to borrow $95 million in the bond market, of which $74 million is additional revenues to go to the numerous projects that are outlined in Bill Number 207-32, it will not result in a rate adjustment for the ratepayers because it would replace existing annualized debt payments by GPA. So, with that in mind, Madam Speaker, I guess there's one question that I have burning inside of me in terms of, looking at what has transpired just within the last year, CCU was very successful in securing approximately $1.5, $105 million for incremental impacts to the water and wastewater system with the federal government as a result of the impending military relocation. And that would apply to water and wastewater. My question to the sponsor of this legislation and the chairman that oversees GPA is, are there ongoing discussions in regards to GPA either power production or power distribution requirements for the military relocation, impending military relocation upon conclusion of the SEIS, whether there are ongoing negotiations that would allow GPA to possibly secure additional revenues and perhaps offset some of the costs that are either highlighted here, or some of the incremental costs as a result of the military relocation? So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask the sponsor of this legislation and the good chairman overseeing GPA, if they are also looking forward to acquiring additional resources to be able to support the system. If you can yield, please, Madam Speaker.
Senator Ada, would you like to yield?
I'm not privy to any discussion that might be going on, so I really cannot answer that. I might suggest, Madam, Madam Speaker, if I may just elaborate further, there may be a lot of lingering questions, and as much as I've tried to explain the bill, if it gives greater comfort to the body, then maybe it would be beneficial to go into a committee of the whole tomorrow morning and have GPA come down here and actually show their spreadsheet, show us why you say that a rate increase will not be triggered. The very question of, has there been any discussion with the Navy? The question of maybe further clarifying, better than I may have, this issue of a $40 million investment in the energy storage system, the batteries. You know, that might be a worthwhile investment of time tomorrow morning, but nobody has asked for a committee of the whole to bring them in so that they can respond to the questions. And, and you know, they have the details, and they can speak to the nuances of, of the various points in the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you for the good senator who has proffered that idea. And I only bring this up as an issue, Madam Speaker, because as a result of the authorization that was granted by this body, the earlier part of this year or the latter part of last year, to GWA to go out and borrow $450 million specifically over the course of the next five years for much-needed water and wastewater projects, one of the key questions that was asked is, should this military relocation be realized? What would be the impact on the ratepayers and the amount that you are going to go out and borrow in terms of the four, reaching that $450 million authorization amount? The response was, during the discussion, that if in fact they're able to receive additional funds as a result of the incremental impact on the water and wastewater system of the impending military relocation, then it would be good news for the ratepayers because their projected five-year rate adjustment perhaps may have, may not be as high as what they have proposed to the PUC. So, that's one of the reasons why, Madam Speaker, I had to pose that question, because we certainly need to continue to look for resources that will conserve or minimize any rate adjustment on the part of the people of Guam. And you and I know, and the members of this body know, that every time there's a rate adjustment for water and wastewater and power, that that is one of the biggest concerns that has been expressed by members of our community. So, Madam Speaker, if there's no objection, I'd like to yield to the recommendation of the sponsor of this legislation that perhaps tomorrow morning would be an appropriate time to reach out to these representatives and get that assurance about no rate increase for our ratepayers, and then get some information in terms of whether in fact they are pursuing resources from the federal government as a result of the impending military relocation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
So, you're making the motion. On that motion, Senator Frank Huggins' motion, does anyone care to speak on it? Senator Mike Siniklas, you're addressed on the motion.
Just to clarify, Madam Speaker, I do support the motion, but I also have a whole list of questions, and I know GPA is most likely listening, so I would like to seek your guidance. When would you think it would be appropriate for me to state these in this current discussion that we're having so that GPA can be prepared of the answers tomorrow? Would that be at this time?
Yes, you can speak at this time.
Sure.
But do you have a point of inquiry, Senator Ada?
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker. I, I think maybe if, I'm sure, I'm sure the senator's got some very cogent questions that need to be responded to, and maybe if we can provide that, at least point him in the direction that you're going to be looking at today, and if we're going to go into the committee of the whole tomorrow morning, then they should be prepared for that. They should be prepared for responding to the question of, show me that despite a $93 million debt, there will not be a rate increase. Show me that it is not financially prudent to borrow $5 million to pay off the self-insurance fund, and that it'd be cheaper to just stretch it out. Those are the questions that they, they should be preparing for, and I, you know, hear it from the horse's mouth.
Okay. Senator Mike Siniklas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just for the record and for the benefit of GPA, so that they can be prepared tomorrow, I'd like to go over some of the questions that I had concerning the proposed borrowing. First off, the question of the fact that taking out this bond will not result in an increase in rates for ratepayers, I think it's going to be very, very good for them to be able to illustrate that. But what I would also like for them to be able to illustrate is, if taking this bond out is not going to result in an increase to ratepayers because other debt is going to be maturing, I would also like for them to make it clear exactly how much rates would have dropped if we allowed that debt to mature and we didn't take out this bond. Because based on my rough calculations, this $95 million bond is going to cost between $8 and $10 million a year. And so, if the assumption from GPA is that this bond is going to be paid for because maturing bonds are going to be realized at the same time period, then that means theoretically that the debt service for those old bonds that are maturing are no longer going to be needed to service, I'm sorry, are going to be used to service this new bond. But if we don't have this new bond, then that debt service that's matured no longer needs to be paid. And so, whenever we have a debt that's paid off, that means that we can reduce rates to our ratepayers. And if my calculations are correct, I may be a little bit off, but it may be between $8 to $10 million a year. And when I did some rough calculations, based on a $500 power bill divided by the number of months, we could potentially wipe out power bills for up to 1,000 residents. So, how much exactly will the agency be saving when this debt matures, and how much would rates go down if we did not do this additional borrowing? Now, when I was going through the numbers, I had another concern, and that is that the amount that's being requested is $95 million, but when I added up all of the numbers here on the proposed projects under Item D, it came out to $74 million. And so, I would like to know where's the additional $21 million going to? I did, I did see some general sections here that talked about the cost of the issuance of the bonds, the cost of credit enhancement, the amounts required to provide for reserves, but $21 million of unaccounted expenditures for perhaps those purposes, that's a lot of money. And so, I'd like to be able to get clarification as to where the other $21 million is going if only $74 million is actually needed for the projects. My other question, Madam Speaker, was relative to that $74 million or the $95 million, and relative to the, the fact that if we don't borrow this money, we may be able to lower rates, I am interested now in the itemization of the projects. You know, the $40 million for the batteries, if we didn't borrow for that, how much will we be able to lower rates? The Cabris compound employee and visitor parking lot, you know, how much exactly is that parking lot costing, and what's the impact on rates? The Item Number Five, the $2.45 million for information technology upgrades, exactly what kind of upgrades are we talking about? And is the upgrade worth the continued higher rates? And then, on page five, Number Six, it looks like that's again, another, another process of doing capitalized interest for this borrowing. And see, if we're paying all of this off in 2015... And see, if we're paying all of this off in 2015, then perhaps instead of going out and borrowing now, whatever we can put off and do at a later date, we can probably save up for, so we don't need to do capitalized interest. And those are all things that I would like to have clarified, because, you know, it's one thing for us to be able to say, yes, we're not going to raise rates, that's a really, really good thing, and I'm very, very, I have deep admiration for the Chairman who's constantly looking out for our people, making sure we're not raising it. But for me, as a former banker, whenever you pay off a debt, that's like a huge milestone. It's an opportunity to do a lot of things differently with your cash flow, to be able to make adjustments that might lead to different kinds of investments or better opportunities. And so if we're paying off all this debt by the, in 2015, if we're paying off two big obligations, and it's going to result in a savings of $8 to $10 million a year, what are we going to be doing with that savings? Are we going to rush out and go out and borrow, using that same debt service amount and keeping everything at parity? Or can we be more critical of what it is that we are borrowing, how much we're borrowing, what we're borrowing for, and use the savings to drive rates down even more for our people? So I thank the Chairman for the opportunity to call the authority in for questions tomorrow. I hope they're able to get all that, and we will be asking those questions in the Committee of the Whole. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Mike Siniklas. Anyone else on the motion? If not, Senator Huggins, would you like to close? Senator Tom Hatta?
Well, actually, Madam Speaker, so then I guess, given that we want to go on the Committee of the Whole tomorrow morning...
Yes, so there's a motion that's going to be made, and if there's no objection, then we'll just set the bill aside and go into the Committee of the Whole tomorrow morning at 9:00.
Okay.
Okay? On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, is, we'll go back to 244-32COR. We did set it aside, yes. I'll give the opportunity, Senator Duennas, for Senator Huggins to speak, as he had the floor, moving it into third reading.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Good morning again to you and our fellow colleagues. I'd like to start off by highlighting, Madam Speaker, that Bill Number 244, if you'll take a look at the numerical sequence, the motion to place in third reading is still in order, correct, Madam Speaker? Just so that we're...
Yes, to place it into the third reading voting file.
Okay.
Right, I understand. Senator Duennas, when we left off yesterday, when the motion was to set aside, discussion was already done, discussion was already done, and at the request of the author to set it aside, that motion was granted. Now, we've come back to that, and he had the floor. So that's where we're at right now.
Sure. Yeah, just a point of information and inquiry to you, Madam Speaker. In the press release that was sent out by the Rules Chair, is discussion suspended, and so there will be, after this discussion, at least from the release and what the Rules Chair has put out, that there will have to be a motion to send it down to third.
Madam Speaker, the motion yesterday was to accept the version as amended by the author and to place the legislation in the third reading with discussion.
Right.
So we are in the discussion mode.
Okay. Senator Huggins, you are right, and at this time, it's a discussion, you are ready to...
Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank the good Senator, the previous Speaker, for highlighting that particular reporting, and I certainly hope that that would be corrected in terms of how this bill has progressed. But, Madam Speaker, first of all, just for the information of members in the community who may be watching, this is Bill Number 244-32COR, and is an act amending public law 32-068 relative to withholding tax revenue collections and making appropriations to the unified judiciary for law enforcement salary increase implementation. I'm going to make this fairly brief, Madam Speaker, because I think that if you take a look at the title, you take a look at the timing of the introduction of this legislation, Bill Number 244 has been considered by this body or was initially introduced three, four months ago, knowing full well that in the last week of December, if I'm not mistaken, that the government of Guam, across the executive branch and the judiciary branch, had implemented the remaining balance of the 20% for our law enforcement officials, which was authorized by Public Law 29-105 back in 2008. Madam Speaker, this proposal not only recognizes the anticipated adjustment in revenues as a result of that pay adjustment for our law enforcement in the government of Guam, but it also identifies $944,000 out of those additional revenues to be allocated specifically to the judiciary of Guam to take care of our law enforcement personnel, the probation officers, as well as the marshals in the judiciary. Why $944,000? Well, in this case, because the seats have changed, Mr. Speaker. In this case, prior to the implementation by the Chief Justice at that time, there was a letter that was forwarded to the Speaker of this body, and all of the members who were CC'd provided copies, which highlighted that upon the implementation of the remaining balance of the 20%, that the judiciary of Guam is going to need an excess of $900,000 to be able to cover that expense for the balance of the fiscal year. And that's what we have here, Mr. Speaker, is Bill Number 244 that would provide that additional funding allocation from the general fund, as highlighted in here. The presentation yesterday was that this is a singular appropriation of $944,147 to be able to take care of what I just highlighted a little earlier. Mr. Speaker, I would like to close with this statement, that the responsibility and the obligation and the concurrence was granted by this body in terms of authorizing the balance of the payment for our law enforcement officials. This is all about making things whole. This is about assuring our law enforcement personnel in the third co-equal branch of government that, in fact, their 20% adjustment rightfully deserved, based on the passage of Public Law 29-105, that they can be assured that they will have, the judiciary will have the funding to continue that compensation for the balance of the fiscal year. So I stand here and I ask our colleagues, Mr. Speaker, for your consideration, for your support, understanding full well that this is a singular appropriation measure, although there's a set aside of 1.2, and tax refund set asides are not appropriations, in my personal humble opinion, but this would provide the judiciary with the funds to ensure that they can carry out, continue to carry out, that compensation for our law enforcement officials. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask for the consideration and the support of the members of this body. Thank you very much.
Senator Duennas?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in full support of Bill 244. Before I move into my comments on the bill, and I'm going to proffer an amendment, I would like to have the ruling, perhaps from the parliamentarian, or maybe the author of the bill, could explain this being an appropriation measure, is there a required waiver for the Committee of the Whole, especially since it identifies all of the revenues in the fiscal year 14 budget? I just never heard that waiver requested, Mr. Speaker. And I know whether that's rules, or I would like a ruling.
Let's take a minute recess.
Thank you.[1163.33]
This legislature is back from recess. I understand there was a question and inquiry on the floor. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and address, at the request of the author of Bill 244, I'm going to, Senator Duñez, I'm going to go ahead and address Senator Uggan for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the good Senator is correct in terms of any appropriation measure really should be bystanding rules discussed in the committee in the hall unless the body chooses otherwise. So, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the suspension of that or the waiver of the requirement for the committee in the hall solely to discuss Bill number 244 dash 32, which is a singular appropriation for our law enforcement personnel at the Judiciary of Guam. Please, Madam Speaker, that's my motion.
Say that, can you repeat that motion again?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the waiver of the requirement for a committee in the hall on the discussion of Bill number 244 dash 32 COR as amended by the author, which specifically is a singular appropriation for our law enforcement officials at the Judiciary of Guam.
On that motion?
That's my motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Objection?
There is an objection. Do you wish to speak on the motion or would you like to call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. All those in favor of the Senator Frank Uggan motion to waive the committee of the hall, please signify by raising your hand because there's been an objection. I'm going to say motion fails. Senator Frank Uggan, the motion fails.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I guess that at this time temporarily suspends discussion of Bill number 244, so I will yield to your chair in terms of the nature of our agenda. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Yes. With that, on the motion to, we will suspend Bill 244 till nine o'clock tomorrow morning. I mean after, after 207. Right. So, 244 is suspended and it will be addressed after we address Bill 207 as substituted and further substituted on the floor. And at this time, I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Tom Ada for some motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to revert back to legislative concurrence.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I would like to place three appointments into the voting file, and that is the appointment of Mr. Kenneth P. Charagelov to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board, to serve as the retired school administrator representative.
On that motion, to place on the voting file for Kenneth P. Charagelov, without any objections, motion carries.
From the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, the nomination of Charlene D. Conception to serve as a member of the Guam Education Board as the parent representative.
And is that to do confirm, Senator Ada?
Yes.
On that motion, motion carries. Senator Ada, just for the record, on the first motion on Mr. Charagelov, was that also to do confirm?
Yes.
On that, on that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Mister, Senator Ada?
Madam Speaker, from the Committee on Education, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, the nomination of Gina Y. Ramos to serve as a member of Guam Community College Board of Trustees with a recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion for Gina Ramos, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I revert, would like to revert back to, to motions.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. Senator Ada?
I, Madam Speaker, I move to place Resolution number 358 dash 32 LS on the agenda.
And, and as substituted and that, and if you can just, if you can just read the, yes, we do.
I need a copy, I need a copy of the resolution.
No. No, we didn't pass it out, but I'll go ahead and have the, no, we'll just go ahead and the version that's passed out. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do that one first.
Madam Speaker, that, the Resolution number 358 dash 32 LS as substituted by the author relative to requesting for declaratory judgment from the Supreme Court of Guam as to the ability of E. Les Laturangguahan through a duly-passed law of Guam to direct the Guam Election Commission to place a measure on the ballot pursuant to Title III, Chapter 16, Article IV, the Guam Code annotated.
Without any objection, motion carries. Senator Ada, you've got?
I've got one more.
Two eighty-six? Senator Tommy Morrison's?
Madam Speaker, on the third, I, on the third reading file, I move to recall Bill number 286 dash 32 COR and Bill number 135 dash 32 COR back to the second reading file.
And on two eight six, is that for a minor amendment, Senator Ada?
Yes.
Yes. I will go ahead and have him do it one by one. On two eight six, there's, on two eight six to take it out from the third reading file to move it back to second for a minor amendment, we'll go ahead and entertain if there are any objections. Are there any objections on that one? No objections, motion carries. We'll go ahead and, and do all the motions first and then we'll do one by one. Is, if that's okay with everyone? Senator Ada, you're still recognized, you've got two more.
On the third reading, I further move to recall Bill number 135 dash 32 COR back to the second reading.
And Senator Uggan, you have a point of information?
Actually, it's on the motion, Madam Speaker, I'd like to amend that motion with the specific proposed action to delete Section 6 so that everyone understands the nature of pulling back Bill number 135. So, the motion would be to recall Bill 135 back to the second reading with the express purpose of deleting Section 6 in that particular proposal. And that's my amendment to the motion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objection, motion carries. I understand that Senator Brett McCreedy may have one motion to bring back. Can you go ahead and tell him? I'll go ahead and address, Senator Brett McCreedy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to take Bill 283-32 and act to approve and adopt the CIP schedule for the, for the commercial port from third reading file back to second reading file.
For, for an amendment?
And we go into committee as a whole?
There's an objection on this, on the motion, or would you like to speak on it, Senator Brett McCreedy?
Yes, Madam Speaker, we have the Port Authority who, I know this is a time-sensitive, who just received the substituted version of the bill, which is the intent of the, the originally introduced bill is much different than the substituted version, and I would like for them to be able to express their concerns to this body so we can make a better educated decision. And, and I do believe that we teeter on the fact that this bill, as if it goes through this process and gets passed and sent to the governor, it may be a vetoed bill. So, I just want to make sure and ensure that we, we pass a responsible bill, and that's why I would like for a committee as a whole.
There is an objection to bringing the port bill back, and I'm gonna, there was an objection, so all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Wait, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Senator Ada, you are right. I will give the opportunity for the author of the legislation. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It is true that the bill that was reported out of committee was substituted and contains several sections more than what was originally introduced. What was originally introduced was really basically a real simple bill which says to approve and adopt the Port Authority master plan without having any other information. That was really all that the original bill could do. But we had to introduce that bill so that we can get the ball roll, initiate the necessary actions that then would follow after that. It'll get referred to the committee. The committee schedules a public hearing, and we schedule it to get on the session agenda in order to meet our sixty-day timeline. Now, the substitutions that were made does not, I believe, take away from the master plan itself. The substitution, the substituted bill made amendments to, to the original bill to the extent of saying that we adopt, we did not adopt the four hundred and twenty-page document because I don't think it's our place to, to evaluate whether the projections that were made by the consultant on the, you know, the economic impact, the number of containers and all that, that's, you know, but I think in reading through it, it was reasonable enough to give you the comfort level that at least the recommendations that they were making were well-founded. Now, the substitutions that were made to the bill were as follows. One, it said that in the capital improvement project schedule, two facilities were to be added to the category of projects that was called the sustainable improvement projects of which port funds will be used to, to be funded, and those port funds are going to necessarily come from rate increases. The reason why those two facilities were put in there, F-1 and Gulf Pier, is because those are the two facilities where your fuel tankers come in to basically supply the island with the fuel that we use. Now, if one reads the master plan on the evaluation and the assessment that they made of each and every facility down at the port, you will find that at the F-1 pier, it talks about the eroding, the erosion that is occurring on one side of the pier. And, and it wasn't included in the, in the, in the schedule of capital improvement projects to be undertaken. The Gulf Pier is the same thing. There were some safety issues there. Now, I understand that the port is saying, well, it's unnecessary to put that in there, to add it to the list because you've got a management contract for those particular facilities. TriStar has a management contract to basically operate and manage F-1, and Mobil has a contract to manage and operate the Gulf Pier. But my understanding of those management contracts is basically to just do the day-to-day routine maintenance, but that any significant capital improvements that have to be undertaken is, can, can be undertaken by Mobil, but they're going to turn right around and pass the bill on to the port. So, you know, and if in fact the management contract that covers, then that makes F-1, you know, adding F-1 and Gulf Pier onto the list moot if in fact it is to be covered by that. Now, the reason why that was put on there was that as the committee was reviewing the capital improvement project schedule, we find that in there, in the sustainable group of projects, was projects such as a three million dollar renovation to the Harbor of Refuge, a half a million dollars to the Agate Marina. I, I don't see what those facilities have to do with the throughput of cargo into our island. Yet, those were put on to the sustainable group of projects, but those two facilities where a hundred percent of our fuel comes through was not on there. And so, and I expressed that concern at the public hearing, so it should not come as a surprise. The other, the other, the other change that was made, that was put into the substitute bill is that it was going to require the port for the next two years to provide a progress or a status report every six months to the legislature and to the governor's office as to the progress being made on the capital improvement projects, on the progress being made in carrying out the strategic recommendations, and then after those two years, the report requirements will be annually. Now, maybe the port thinks that that is onerous, but we've also seen that we've had, you know, the 2007 master plan, that thing wasn't moving as fast as it should have, and sometimes you, you need to stay on top of these things in order to make sure that it's moving along. So, you know, it's not some kind of unfunded mandate. All we're asking is every six months. No, we're stuck in the mud because we can't get a procurement contract out, we can't, we can't move forward because the bank wants this signature or that signature. So, I think the legislature and the governor's office needs to be aware so that to see where legislative intervention might be appropriate. The fourth item that was put into the bill was that it asked that the priority of revenues that the port generates from its tariff be utilized towards the improvement of facilities that are directly related to the throughput of cargo. And the reason for that was during the public hearing when I asked about the funding for the Harbor of Refuge and the Agate Marina, I was told, oh, these are all federal funds. So, after the hearing, I asked, please provide me the documentation of the federal funds that have been made available for these projects. The three million dollars for the Harbor of Refuge, which was supposedly federally funded, only had a hundred million, a hundred thousand dollar federal fund grant to support it, which means then that if the port was going to go through that project, it would have had to use 2.9 million dollars of its own funds that had to, to support a project that had nothing to do with the throughput of cargo through that port. The five hundred thousand dollars for the Agate Marina, now that one, there was one grant for, I believe, well, there was an amount, one project for 250,000 dollars, I believe forty-eight percent of that was federally funded, and the other 250,000 dollar price tag was fully federally funded. So, all I'm saying is, if you're going to raise rates, then the priority of the use of those revenues should be directed towards the improvement of the facilities that are directly related to the throughput of cargo for the people in the community and not to some place outside of those marine industrial facilities and the container facility, which facilities outside of that which have nothing to do with the throughput of cargo. So, if, if we're bringing it back because, because somebody objects to that, I, I don't understand, how come those objections were not raised during the, when we were discussing the bill? And I believe I, I took the time and I believe that I adequately explained what the bill was doing, but nobody, nobody asked any questions. So, why now are we going to go back to a committee of the whole? Why now bring it back? So, my objection stands, Madam Speaker, that I, I don't, I don't see any reason why we should go back and go into a committee of the whole for that matter.
Thank you, Senator Ada. I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote.
Madam Speaker, you're allowing everybody to speak.
Senator Duñez, it, Senator?
Please, please.
I, yes. It was brought to my attention by, and, and, and with cause, this is an undebatable motion. I-
So, the rule will apply now?
Well, it was brought to my attention, and I will confer with the, the decision that was brought to my attention, going to go for the vote right now. Unless my subject, Senator, Senator, the minority leader did bring it up to my attention, and I will, for the record, ask the body if they would allow Senator Duñez to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, since already the debate has started, that, you know, you allow Senator Duñez to go ahead and finish, and then we can conclude from there.
Madam Speaker, the question on the floor was to bring back 283 into the third reading, and then to go-
And to resolve, and to resolve into the committee of the whole.
That's right. And so, I was, I was explaining my objection.
To, to bring it back to, from the third reading voting file to the second, to go into the committee of the whole, and there was an objection, and I, I did present to the mover and to the author that opportunity, so I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. On that, on that motion, there was an objection. All those in favor to bring the Bill 283, 283, from the third reading voting file to second, to resolve into a committee of the whole, there was an objection. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. On that motion, motion fails. Are there any other motions on the floor, if not by Speaker? Oh, Senator Ada, I do apologize. I'd like to ask if you can take and move Bill 2- If, if we can move 289 back to committee?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
By Speaker?
That is my bill, and I'll move it back to committee. I, I need to clean that up, of the committee report. Thank you.
On that motion, without any, any objections, motion carries. We're going to go ahead and take a one-minute recess.
We're going to go back to our second reading. I understand, Senator Morrison, you had an amendment to make on your bill two eight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I, I want to thank the vice speaker, I'm in Speaker Juan Pat, Senator Yamashita, and Senator Munia Barnes for their contribution to 286, and I apologize, it slipped my mind, and I want to just make a minor amendment to add them as co-sponsors to Bill 286. Mr. Speaker, I ask that we move, move it down to the voting file?
On the motion, just send the bill back down to third, to the voting file. Hearing no objection. Is Senator Uggan in the room? All right, it's still early enough. Did you want to discuss?
Mr. Speaker, I, I do have Resolution 358, and if we can just ask for a minute recess, I want to make sure that the right substituted resolution is on the floor, so if you can just give me a minute, please.
All right, we'll take a short recess. Rather than sit and wait for the resolution to be distributed, let's take this time to prepare it and make sure it's distributed. Let's take a lunch break, and we'll come back at two o'clock.